Amen. I've been hoping up with prayer. Father, we thank you for your goodness and your mercy. Thank you for all you've done for us. Thank you for the opportunity you've given us to live in the land that we live in. Thank you for handing y'all can more station. Thank you for allowing me to grow up in this part of the country where I learned a lot of values and character building. And Father, we just ask you will continue to bless the citizens of these two communities in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
First of all, I want to thank you for attending this town hall meeting presented by the Empowerment Community Development Corporation and the Texas African American Museum. About us, the Empowerment Community Development Corporation is a 501(c)(3) organization with focus on education, arts, tourism, veteran services, scholarship grants, youth mentorship, history preservation, community development, housing, and economic empowerment, small and minor to own business. Our mission is to engage in community development activities that provide resources to educate, equip, and empower individuals, families, and communities. Our target population is low and moderate income communities in the East Texas region. Now, just we service, our services is broad, but a lot of our target is low and moderate income. I would make Antioch and Moore Station a good fit for what we do. It's in our jurisdiction, but also it's rural, and rural communities have an opportunity to get a lot of resources and grants that's available out there. Our goal is that we want to accomplish by holding this town hall as we go forward is we want to form the Antioch Moore Station Historical Preservation Committee through our Empowerment CDC and Empowerment Neighborhood Development Services. We want five for historical markers for the Antioch Rosenwald School, Moore Station Town, which was founded by former slaves, which make it an historical Freedom Colony, also for Belt and Cemetery and Friendship Cemetery. And I will encourage you all, if you got, have the, I have assets to get on the internet, you can go to theTexasFreedomColoniesProject.com and really find out what Freedom Colony is all about. There are places that were settled by formerly enslaved people during the reconstruction Jim Crow eras in Texas following emancipation. Formed from 1865 and 1930, African Americans accumulated land and founded 557 historical black settlements or Freedom Colonies. So, Moore Station is a very historical area. And also, places with fewer than 25,000 people with the most black population, Moore Station is in the top 10. I got this off of Wikipedia, Moore Station have a population, a percentage of blacks, 98.91%. But that population number is decreasing as more people are finding gold mine property in Moore Station, Antioch, because they've been lost by taxes and what have you. I see where Mr. Abe Robinson, their place is up for sale. And four acres, I'm sure it probably lost through taxes, probably very minimal, but now they ask, it's a company out of Houston asking $89,000 for their property. And one of the things we hope to set up here, if we get people that want to get motivated, if we give people excited about history as they are about the Dallas Cowboys, oh man, we will be moving, even when Dallas are losing, every year it's still Super Bowl. Man, if we can get all the people, I'm not just talking about Moore Station, Antioch, but all across the United States, if all the people would get motivated, excited about their history, oh man, we can really move some great things. Because there are money right now, there is a move of people who have, I guess I'll use the word empathy toward the plight that black Americans come through. So there is a lot of companies like Nike, different one of them, they're handing money out to blacks because they do realize there were, there was some things that were done that shouldn't have been done. And so, some of them are trying to make up for that. So we need to be in line, receiving some of that money. And if we don't, it's nobody fault for ours. And so that's why we want to motivate and encourage, this is my hometown, and we've got to keep history alive because if we don't, it's gonna be forgotten. My kids not going to feel no reason to come back home, or what have you. So, we need to do some things that I had, okay, yeah. And also, the Rosenwald School, which was in Moore, in Antioch. And so we really need to find exactly where the school was at. So, we could, if the land is still empty, we can get that property, put a marker on it, and maybe even put a park or something there, some kind of memorial. If not, then we can do it here at the church. But it would be wonderful if we could get the exact location where it was built. We also would like to create a Founder's Day celebration, preserve property owned by ancestors which died, some of them died, they bled, they sweated, prayed over properties that is being bought pennies on the dollar now. And we want to seek grants for economic empowerment. Would it be wonderful if there was a 24-hour or 12-hour, what you call fitness center in Moore Station? It can happen. It can happen right now. T-Mobile for the, in five years, they giving out money up to $50,000 to communities under 25,000 population. But there is other grants out there. And what we would like to see is get the people motivated and start a membership committee. And if people just gave $10 a month or $120 a year, that money could add up. And when people see that you've got skin in the game, it makes them more prompt to give grants toward, because they see that the people really want this to happen. But if people are not doing anything, there is not going to be, they not going to be motivated to give out the money that's there, that somebody is going to get. So why not Antioch and Moore Station have some of that money come in? There is a company that will put a, they would spend up to $25,000 putting in a part of equipment, like slides and all of that, that a grant can be applied for and put in Moore Station somewhere, in the town center where the school is at. That's where the committee is going to come together, put their heads together, and make some great things happen. So at this time, I'm going to tell you a little bit about what our organization, of what we are doing. We, I founded this organization, Empowerment CDC, back in 20, I believe it was 2016, 2015. We were pastor in a church, and we felt that God was calling us out more into the community. So my wife and I made a very hard, difficult decision. We felt this what God wanted us to do. So we established the Empowerment Community Development Corporation, and also Empowerment Ministry to deal with the spiritual part of man, and also with the CDC to deal with the physical and social needs of man. So, this guy right here, Clarence Chappell-Ford, and he's on the board, and Ms. Washington, she's on the board, she was the executive director of the museum. And back in 2020, the city of Tyler donated our organization over quarter million dollar building, almost two acres, to our organization, debt-free, we don't owe a dime on it. And we just completed $40,000 renovation on it. You got to come see us, beautiful site, right on 3309 Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. And with that, we are doing a lot of showcasing of history. And one thing that we are doing that I learned, and I think most of all of us, especially in the black community, we grew up and at a time when we were singing this song, "Give me my flowers while I can smell them and see them." And so that's one thing we do, we honor people while they are alive. We do honor history that's passed, but while wait for somebody to die and honor them, we are doing a lot of honoring people. In fact, in November the 20th, if you will put this on your calendar, we are bringing in, to Tyler, Texas, at the Rose Garden, we will be bringing in Ms. Opal Lee. She is considered the grandmother of June 10th. She the one that walked to Washington DC to make it happen. She's 96 years old, and she's going to be in Tyler, Texas, the Lord willing, everything go well. She's already booked, scheduled to come, and it's going to be a great, if you want to come and you want to see, let me know, I will reserve your seat, because I think it's going to be full of crowd, it doesn't cost a dime to get in. We're going to be honoring a lot of people tonight as well. You can go to the next slide. About, before COVID hit, this young lady right there in the middle, we was contacted a small community outside of Milano called Freeman Chapel. We were informed about an elderly couple that had a bad roof on their house, and they needed a repair, a whole new roof. So what happened was, we went down, I went down, I vetted them, made sure everything was legit. They had had problems, she had bad knees, husband, hard situation, they both around 70, fixed income, they have no money to get their roof fixed. So when we started with a fundraiser, we done on Facebook, right around, we raised right around $1,000. And we had a good rapport with CBS Not 10. They come down and they done a story on it. Well, while the story is running on TV, on news, Avco Roofing seen it. So Avco Roofing said, well, we're gonna put the roof on with no charge. And then loads from Longview came along and donated all of the material. But they got a brand new roof on their home, then cost them a dime and $1,000 that we raised, we helped. They need a wallah heater, we got that, they need some more things, we spent a whole $1,000 on their house. And so in the meantime, in this community, that's his, Mr. Lee's great, I won't say great, great granddad. He founded this community, they was the only two people left in this church. And so, she said, we, we're gonna be leaving here soon, man. We need, we need to put, have the church in good hands. She asked, will we take over the church? And I said, we'll think about it, I talked to the board about it. So about another year later, we, I took the board down there, they looked at it, they decided, yeah, we would take it on. So they asked me to do their homecoming revival, which was three nights, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday day. And I didn't charge them a dime to do it, had people come around from the community. And so, a year later, now we had a revival in that church, and Josh and you was there, it looked pretty decent, right? We come Friday after Thanksgiving, I think that was 20, she got on math, yeah, 2020. And the walls started to have bowled out, I mean, it was a mess on the inside, stuff started falling out of the scene. So we had no choice, we brought a couple of experts out, and said, the best thing you can do is tear it down. And so we tore it down, that's where you see the empty lot, but we kept it, that was their fellowship hall. And this is what we want to do in the future, is come in and build a, because there's a graveyard right, cemetery right beside, people still use the cemetery, come back home and get there. We want to build a small memorial for Mr. Lee and his uncle, so that would be something preserved of him founding, that is a Freedom Colony that was founded after slavery. So we established the Wood County, that's in Wood County, so we established the Wood County Neighborhood Development Services, it was just like we want to do here. But the difference between that and this, Moore Station got people. And then we have, Antioch have people, we have people who have moved off and can contribute also. And how many of y'all have ever heard of the Coasters? Charlie Brown, he's a clown, whole group. Well, we found that Mr. Carl Gardner, the founder of the Coaster, was born in Texas, in Todd, went to Hennepin Scott, graduated. So we, we done Carl Gardner, they got a proclamation from the city, that's his family that come out. We had Black Music Month celebration, I went back in, might have been 2017, I think. And so it was a great day. And so we, we recognized him, he has never been recognized before in Tyler, he's guilty. And then Robert Taylor, the only person that we know that have won Olympic medal, it might be, I think a girl went this past Olympic from Tyler, I can't remember if she won. Well, Robert Taylor graduated from Hennepin Scott, he was in 1972 Olympics, he won a silver medal in 100, which he didn't know he was gonna run, he got there just in time to be able to run. And he won a silver medal, he won a gold medal on the relay, 400, the relay. So downtown Tyler, they had what they call a half mile of history. And we were responsible for getting that marker there in Tyler, you can go to the next one. Y'all know this guy, Mr. Willie Neil Johnson. We were responsible for getting his marker down in Tyler, that's his family, they had a big day down at the downtown Tyler. If you go downtown Tyler, his marker is right in front of, what's the name of that theater? Liberty Theater. And you can go to the next one. And Mr. Doolan Wilson from Tyler, Texas. A lot of people just didn't have a clue, and he appeared in over 20 films, one with Bob Hope, Lena Horne, and he's in the movie Casa Blanca, Casa Blanca, or like, it might not be saying it right. He on the piano, he said, and the lady said, "Play it, Sam," and he played it again. Well, that guy was from Tyler, Texas, he went everywhere, performing, therefore he was a kid. So we were responsible, his marker is in front of Liberty Theater, we thought that was appropriate since they were actors, singers, or whatever, put it in front of Liberty, you can go to the next one. This picture is from Fitz University, they're documentary stuff. This is the Rosenwald School that was in Antioch. This is the school, the building that was here right here in Antioch. I got, go to the video about the history, short video about the history of the Rosenwald School.
President of Rosenwald School was Jewish, I mean, was he Jew?
Yes, ma'am.
He's Jewish, wasn't he?
They were called Rosenwald Schools, built between 1912 and 1937. They provided an opportunity for hundreds of thousands of poor African Americans to be educated in the segregated South. In fact, their construction has been called one of the most effective philanthropic endeavors of the 20th century. But the story of the schools in the benefactor remain largely unknown today. We traveled to Georgia last week to learn about the past and the impact of these institutions, and what they're still having on us today. From above, it seems ordinary, a simple white house in our northwest of Atlanta, but when the Noble Hill School was constructed nearly 100 years ago, it was revolutionary.
This was my school, they followed, so it wasn't allowed to be taught.
Marion Coleman and four generations of her family were educated here, one of thousands of schoolhouses built over three decades that transformed African-American education in the rural South.
We went, we lived free to do, to think that we could accomplish more, but when we were able to get the school, and this has made the foundation, so that we could really believe in ourselves, and the teachers helped us to know that we were able to move forward now.
They became known as Rosenwald Schools, named after wealthy industrialist Julius Rosenwald, the president of retail giant Sears.
This is an important Southern story, this is an important American story, the story transforms America.
The title for Andrew Fyler's town in my story in black and white, a story that grew out of a friendship between Rosenwald, the son of Jewish immigrants, and eminent educator Booker T. Washington, founding president of the Tuskegee Institute.
Tuskegee, the institute which he founded?
Together, they sought to reverse Sears' inequality in education because of slavery and segregation.
The story are the pillars of my life, the relationship between Jews first of all, and Booker T. Washington is the foundation of the black Jewish alliance that becomes a pillar of the civil rights movement.
In 1912, they launched a pilot program, building six schools in Alabama, requiring local communities to donate the land and raise matching funds. What were they trying to defeat?
Google started up as being segregated, then segregated through that part.
What does that do to a town?
Well, to me, that would dishearten them, give them, make them feel like they didn't matter.
Within 25 years, 4,978 schools were built across 15 states, buildings in basic design, two rooms with removable partition, large windows to let in light, and a plain exterior to avoid unwanted attention. These little schools had such a profound impact, can you put it into words?
There are comments at the Federal Reserve Bank that have done five studies of Rosenwald Schools, and what their, their analysis shows is, prior to World War I, there was a large and persistent black-white education gap in South. That gap closes precipitously between World War I and World War II. And the single greatest driver of that achievement, and it is an achievement, is Rosenwald Schools.
I think of our educational system today, I wonder what could be learned from a deeper dive into the Rosenwald history?
We often think that problems in America, public policy problems in America are so attractive, particularly those related to race. At the center of this story is Julius Rosenwald and Booker T. Washington, reaching across divides of race, religion, and region, partnering with black communities and white school boards to fundamentally change America.
Only about 500 schools remain, relics of the time before legal segregation ended in 1954. Some had been repurposed or rebuilt, but many are in disrepair, forgotten by the communities they served. Fyler spent three and a half years documenting it. His photographs are on display at the National Center for Civil and Human Rights in Atlanta, an effort to help preserve their legacy. Why don't we know this?
Julius Rosenwald was a very modest man. He did not, he did not name these schools Rosenwald Schools. They've become known as Rosenwald Schools. One of the reasons why we don't know the Rosenwald name as much as we know the names of some of these philanthropic contemporaries like Carnegie, Rockefeller, Ford.
They were monument builders.
They were.
He was a legacy builder.
Yes.
That legacy is still being felt. Many of those educated Rosenwald Schools were meant to higher education, and in turn, educated future generations.
(Singing) We shall whover come, from the [singing].
And prominent leaders of the civil rights movement like Medgar Evers, Maya Angelou, and Congressman John Lewis came through these institutions. Today, Noble Hill is a museum run by Marion's niece, Valerie. Generations removed from the school, but steeped in its history.
It's not just African-American history to us, it's also American history. This is not just a job for me, this is legacy.
It is such an amazing place to go and to see how community has so embraced, or re-embraced the school. I knew nothing about these schools.
Makes me want to visit, I will help.
I know, I know, but there is a book that Fyler put together, Better Life for Their Children, the foreword written by John Lewis, and in it he says, "Their partnership demonstrates that concerted action can make America better and the world better. Education is the cornerstone of democracy."
Come across the aisle, come across colors, come across religion, come together and educate. Yes, beautiful piece of shit.
Thank you.
So, as you see, Antioch is a part of that great history. I believe that if 466 of those schools was built in Texas, and we were one of them that was here, so it should be a great effort from us to make that happen. And Moore Station, this is the, this is the picture I was talking about earlier, Mr. Moore, but the other picture has another guy in there, maybe could have been his sister, his brother or something. And this is their tombstones in Belt and Cemetery, which needs to be cleaned up because name Joshua went down there maybe three years ago, you can't read it. But Mr. Dr. Hackney, he was going to have a workshop down here about how you claim tombstones without destroying. So we may need to get him back to make that happen, so we can preserve the history of our ancestors. Next video I'm going to show is about freedom.
That picture used to be in Union Station Church.
Okay, okay.
I don't know if they still have it, or what, but I've seen it.
Okay.
Union Station down here. Because the more, Monkus Moore, that's his family.
They have the full picture?
Uh huh, yeah, I've seen it before, for years. And I'm sure it was Union Station, had to be.
Where it live?
Huh?
Where was it located?
In the church. Uh huh, in the church, I've seen it before. So I don't know if they still have it there, I don't know, in the back or somewhere, but I've seen it.
In the doctor.
The origin stories and legacies of historically black settlements are often untold within a larger geographical narrative. These settlements remind some and introduce to others an expanded view of the African diaspora, as well as the significant living with the Afro-fans. The Texas Freedom Lives Project is one of the many initiatives doing significant work to highlight injustices and advocate for black settlements who are fighting a triad of problems. What is a Freedom Colony? What is a Freedom Colony? Family inside persons and descendants establish black settlements, towns, and communities such as Texas Freedom Colonies. At one time, more than 550 separate settlements existed in Texas alone. The Texas Freedom Colonies Project Atlas and Study is a digital humanities platform and survey which crowdsources, maps, and aggregates Freedom Colony Place heritage and social geographic data. Why should you care? Currently, there is an inability to find many of these communities or their former locations on maps or in current census records, but they live on through memory, church anniversaries, oral histories, and family reunions. Not only are these areas experiencing population loss, but the oral issues of these areas are being neglected due to the lack of consideration from conventional archival operations. Access, vulnerability, and visibility are within the triad of problems previously mentioned that plague black settlements. These geographies often lack the access to resources such as water, electricity, soil recovery, etc. These communities are often in areas prone to experiencing damage from natural disasters as well as man-made hazards, such as contaminated water sources full of toxins. The natural disaster are not the only threat to the memory of black space. Too often, the histories and archival information and cemetery management for a community is spearheaded by one person. The lineage of archives and cemetery caretakers is an important process considered in the grand scheme of preservation of the black community. The Texas Freedom Colonies Project was one of the fortunate recipients of the National Trust African-American Cultural Heritage Action Fund grant in 2019. With this partnership, the research team is firmly working to make innovative contributions to the overall field of cemetery preservation. Additionally, Dr. Andrew Roberts, the founder, has been chosen as a Widing Foundation Public Engagement Fellow for 2020 to 2021. With this partnership, the research team will be allowed to fellowship to engage deeply with members of the Freedom Colony Diaspora, collaborating with museums to gather, share, and preserve the stories that help us understand their enduring attachments to these places. In a series of antique roadshow-style events, Dr. Roberts and the team will invite Freedom Colony descendants to bring in photographs and heirlooms associated with these places and discuss their significance rather than their financial value. With historians, the descendant's stories, photos, and objects will populate a digital showcase exploring the relationship between history, memory, and the value descendants attach to Freedom Colony culture and land. Members of the research team are also researching topics such as disaster preparedness and assessment of places of significance to African-American heritage and culture. More specifically, they are interested in two spaces which play vital roles in understanding the African-American sense of place. The two spaces are archives and cemeteries, as spaces urban planning needs to integrate more directly into research on African-American resilience, disaster recovery, gentrification, historic preservation planning, and community building. The overall urban planning field has long overlooked and disenfranchised black spaces, and as a result, black communities are still reeling from those previous decisions. The added layer of hazard and natural disasters magnifies their issues. Volunteer. Volunteer for our New York County Campaign. Sign up to be a county group member or county captain today. We'll be having a virtual orientation in November for all of our volunteers. So be sure to follow all of our social media platforms and our websites to find out more. You can donate. Our organization depends heavily on outreach and public engagement. You can easily donate via the Texas A&amp;M Foundation online giving portal. I'll show you how quick and easy it is to donate to our mission. You can watch. Join us for our monthly Coffee Talk Interview and Demonstration Series. This series is where we talk about all things related to Freedom Colonies and black settlements. The team conducts interviews with various church and fantasy historians, Freedom Colony business owners, Freedom Colony cultural workers, and genealogists. Coffee Talks will broadcast on Facebook Live at 9:30 a.m. on every third Friday of each month. For our upcoming Coffee Talk, we will be discussing the state of the black church. And lastly, spread the word. Tell your friends, follow us on all of our social media platforms, and spread the word about our mission. We need you in order to continue to support our communities.
I would like to say that instead of donating to them, you can donate. We can form our own uh, deal. Uh, for some of these communities don't, like I said, don't have it like Moore Station and Antioch. We got people, people who have moved off, to get them involved. And we really could, could do some uh, some great things. But one of the first things on the list is that we need to get the historical markers. Uh, and I'm gonna be counting on Cousin over there to help us and...
Me talk to my child, she really was into it at one time. I don't know about Sam, but she was.